Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, September 26, 2011. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lemon, Piana, here. Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We do have a quorum. Councilwoman Baker is ill this evening. Is there a recommendation to excuse her absence?
Support.
Yeah, support, alright. We don't need to vote on that, do we, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Oh, we do, alright. Would you call the roll on excusing her absence?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Piana. Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you very much. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Is there any comments, questions on the agenda this evening? If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved by Piana, seconded by Galloway. Any comments on the agenda this evening? Madam Clerk, call the roll on that.
Councilmembers Lemon.
Yes.
Piana. Yes. Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you very much. Alright, we have a number of presentations this evening, so let's get right into them. Our first group of presentations will be from the Police Department. I see our police chief coming forward. Chief Collins, you have a Citizen Award for us this evening.
I do, Your Honor. Thank you very much. This evening, we would like to honor Mr. Miles Sandbier here. Mr. Sandbier, working in the area of Nine Mile Woodbury Avenue on August 30th of this year, noticed a suspicious man working around a bicycle that was locked to a lamppost. He continued to watch this individual for a period of time until he saw him take a sort of bolt cut out of the locking mechanism that secured the bicycle to the lamppost. He immediately called 911, advised dispatch, he had an excellent description of the suspect, and then continued to follow the suspect, continuing to give information to dispatch as officers arrived. When the officers arrived, we were able to arrest this individual, recover a very expensive $400 bicycle, returned it to the owner, and we arrested the individual. He had a long record of recent crimes, so we're going to take him off the street as well. So, thank you very much for it.
Thank you very much, Chief. Our next presentation is the September 2011 Beautification Awards. Peggy Snow, the Chair of our Beautification Committee, I believe is presenting those. This is September or for the annual?
For the year.
Oh, okay.
Got my finger right.
Monthly annual.
That's okay. Let's bring this up, so that we can all hear you. Very good. Thank you. These are the awards for the June, July, August, and September. We give two residential and a commercial. We add one. Is that big enough? You don't hear?
No.
I thought I could. Yeah, yeah, okay. So, these are the awards. Oh, are we in the way of the, you think?
Yeah.
Should we?
Depending on where you're sitting.
Yeah, alright. Okay. And we're doing something we've been wanting to do for quite a while now. We're showing the pictures as we call out the name and address. And I'd like to thank the city staff. We were kind of, we weren't sure how to do this, but the staff was very helpful, the cable coordinator and everybody. And Suzanne Rowe, one of our commission members, she's down there advancing the pictures for me, so everybody's pitched in, and we appreciate it. And our June commercial winner is Waldman Management at 271 East Oak Ridge. And that's a very nice apartment building. I don't know if anyone's here from the management company. If they are, they could come up, please. When I called to tell them that the building had won the award, he told me how they go around each spring, and they own a number of buildings, this company in the city, and they go around each spring and they make a list of things that each property needs, kind of like we do at home. And then they work on them over the summertime. And he mentioned a few of the other buildings that the company owned, and they were all very well maintained, so we were glad to give them the award. And our residential award for June is Didi and Norm Powell at 445 West Strayton. I don't know if they were able to make it. They were nominated by a neighbor, and I like to, when a neighbor nominates, I like to read what they said. It says dramatically changed a drab, uninspiring landscape to an outstanding vista. So, looked very nice. And the other residential for June is Paulette Hill. Come on up. 234 Old Brickley, and you can see her lovely home here. Yes, she has a very nice home with a little garden area in the front on the one side there, and she has a combination of flower shops, trees, and a great-looking grass. I always look at grass, because I can't grow grass at my house.
It looks good.
Well, it did in person, too, and I went and spoke with her.
Yes, we have an award.
And the July commercial winner was Ferndale Foods. I don't know if anybody else from there. Okay. And I'm sure we've all been in Ferndale Foods and saw how, what a nice job they did inside and out in that building. So, I'm sure no one's surprised that they got an award. And we have a rental for July. It's 770 Withington. And it was bought and remodeled by the Walter PYTIAK and Company. A neighbor had nominated it and also sent in a picture, and the neighbor wrote, "It is a total rebuild of an existing home. It was a blighted home that was rebuilt to meet high-energy green standards, and they maintain the aesthetics of this prairie-style home." And it's with the siding and the new windows and everything, it's quite attractive.
Is that you?
Oh, shut them up, yes!
Are you Walter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Glad you could make it.
Speaker of the House, may I? Mayor Coulter. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the Beautification Award Committee, I want to thank you for the award. I'm in the building business, and it's a long story how we got into this home, but this is a blighted home ready for the wrecking ball. You can see, it's a good-looking home, it's a prairie-style home, and what we did is we got into the act. We rebuilt this home from the exterior and the interior, and I just want to thank the city of Ferndale. You're a professional billing department, the gentleman that's the billing director, Mark Hudson, I think is the name of his, or, yeah, I can't remember his last name, was a professional to work with. And believe me, we do a lot of different things. We build commercial home, commercial billings, residential homes. You always get paid for it, but you get a pat on the back, and it feels a lot better. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, and I appreciate this work. Thank you.
And the residential winner for July is Kelly and Mario Adams Campos, Camples, at 484 West Camborn. I had been keeping my eye on this house. I just loved it that they put the little wrought-iron fence around the front. It was, oh, this just really caught my eye, and then they started adding more flowers and things in the yard there. It just really looks nice.
Thank you for the mention.
And the other July winner is Joe and Kathy Gracia at 827 West Maplehurst. I'd like to see them come up here. We saw the front of the house, but someone had made a note on the form to check the backyard. And the front of the house is just the tip of the iceberg. We couldn't take enough pictures to show the beautiful, beautiful backyard that they have. They have a formal garden way in the back, and it's just amazing, all the work they've put into that yard. They have a pond and everything. Gosh, they have everything in that yard. So, thank you. And I might add, Kathy was so happy to get an award that she's joining the commission. She's been attending. And so, for August, our commercial award.
Everybody always says Chisano.
Chisano Coffee Roasters at 1737 East Nine Mile. I don't know, I thought that was. And the person who nominated it wrote, "It's a gem on East Nine Mile Road, very welcoming on that end of town." Thank you. It looks very nice. Nice to meet you.
And it's not only beautiful, but if you haven't been there, great coffee.
Yes, that's true. Yep, that's true, yes. And the other August residential award is Deborah and David Young at 440 West Troy. And what caught our eye with this house, you see how the stones out front go up towards the porch? Usually, they come out from the porch. And it was, I thought that was kind of eye-catching, plus they're white and matches the house. And, but between the front, the front of the yard and the porch and everything, they just have a lot going on there. It looks very nice. And the other residential for August is Walter and Eldna XHOMAQI at 2016 Bonner. It was better to spell it, believe me, than how I pronounce it. And this is a new home, but, and they, you can't really see it all, but there's just beautiful plantings. They have a white privacy fence up around there, and the plantings are all colored, and they really pop out against that white fence. Very eye-catching.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Don Monck.
Oh, I take it.
Oh, there it is.
Congratulations. And this is the September commercial award. This is, goes to Kim Craig of Detroit Diamonds at 429 Liver Noise. Oh, hi. And this was nominated, this is a building where they run out office spaces. And Kim came in and, in her group, apparently, and they came in, and the garden in the back was just all overgrown. And keep in mind, she's just renting an office, she doesn't own the building or anything. So, she went in and just dug into that garden, and she got 10 bags of waste. Yes, so, yes. And now, it's my understanding, she's working on the front, so we expect to see that next year. Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much. And September residential is Gary Andrews and Jeff Taylor. They live at 446 West Strayton. Now, we took this picture, I believe in June, and we thought it was very eye-catching. It was a nice mix of ferns, hostas, and sculptures, but they later also, they also added impatiens, which were, because when I went over to tell them they won, the impatiens really looked great, but like even before the impatiens, it still looked very nice. And they put in, I asked what kind of raised flower vegetables those were, and they put in four and a half tons of colonial flagstone and four, or nine yards of topsoil. That was in one weekend. A lot of hard work done for them.
Gary's also a curator of the historical museum as well.
Well, you know, I just recognized him, but I didn't, I didn't speak to him when I went to the house, but I did recognize him. Yes, he is. And then our last residential for September is Michael Patiglio, thank you, 536 East Maplehurst. And he's, they've lived there five years, and he's completely redone the whole front of the house. Well, that's the end of the awards for this year, but I did want to mention that last Saturday, we had our perennial exchange, and we had great weather, and I think this year, we had the biggest variety of plants that we've had up until, it's like every year, it grows. And we, our members, of course, help out there, but we also have volunteers that help us every year, and I wanted to thank them. Councilwoman Kate Baker, who's not here, but she's really, she really digs in, I'll tell you.
No pun intended.
No, she, right, but she really does, she enjoys it, and she knows all about plants. She's very good. And so, Kate Baker, Virginia Saxton, Jeannie Davis, Greg Pollica, Dan Martin, and also our master gardener that comes every year, Mary Frederick. And this year, the block award winner is Highland Street from West Strayton to the dead end. It's just a short, little block. But this coming Saturday, October 1st, at 10 o'clock in the morning, we're having our little get-together there with the residents to tell them how much we appreciate them all, pitch again at keeping up their block. Thank you.
I'll just say how much, I'll just say how much we appreciate you too, Peggy. Thanks for all the work that you do as well.
I love the photos.
Alright, that's always a fun, fun thing to do. Our next order of business is the introduction of our new Ferndale Library Director. Is Kate here? There she is. Hi, Kate. Come on up.
I'm actually not a typical librarian. I can't project. I won't shush anybody. Hello. I just wanted to say a quick hi to the council and to Ferndale. I've been here a month and a half, and I'm having a fantastic time getting to know the community. I'm in the process of moving in right now. My cats are still up here and not very happy about it. They're coming down tonight. Just a couple of quick things. September is library card signed on, so if you don't have a library card, I expect to see you next door. You've got 10 minutes left tonight, and a few days left in September. And the friends of the Ferndale Library are doing an 80's prom, which I know has been discussed here at council. Saturday, October 15th, it's 21 and up. The funds will be going towards our teen programming, including books, any other teen services that we're looking to add, $25 a person. Please consider coming out. There's some great retro attire to be found in Ferndale. We have a great display going on in the library now that terrifies me every time I walk by, because I forget they're mannequins in the library. Please feel free to stop in, buy your tickets. If you have questions for me, feel free, I don't know how these introductions go.
You're doing just fine.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions of our new library director? Except, we're thrilled that you're here. Welcome to Ferndale.
I'm so excited. I grew up in Berkeley, so it's kind of like coming home, only better.
We know you'll take good care of our library for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Ferndale. Our next presentation is actually an update from our city manager regarding the emergency communication plan, April.
As you know, the city of Ferndale has had an interesting summer with lots of power outages and such, but what that did, both the event in July and the storm brought about re-looking at our emergency management plan that we use for staff and for city council. And we're going to be taking a look at that over the course of the next few months and really, and really moving forward and trying to make sure that we have all the things in place that we need. But in the meantime, one of the consistent messages was, at least to me, was that in July and at the storm, there was a frustrating sense that we were unable to really communicate with our residents in a clear, concise manner. And what we wanted to do is make sure that while we're doing this emergency management update, that we did present some thoughts in where we're going with our communications plan, because we felt that that was the most, most important thing to focus on. Just a little bit of a background on an emergency operations plan. We are part of Oakland County Emergency Management as well, but each individual city needs to adopt not only the county's plan, but our own individual plan. And that plan covers everything from what staff, what staff does and what order, who's in charge, where council fits, where we go for general emergency preparation. And so, one of the things that you do is we look at that every, you know, every year to every two years as well, to make sure that all of the key players are still there. Right, and department heads have changed, and in January, you'll see a change appear at council, so that will be a readjustment to the plan. One of the things that we want to make sure is that what we do matches a lot of what the county, they kind of lead the direction for the operations plan. So, what we have is something that supports them, but also makes it so internally, we are cohesive. In the events of a significant disaster, such as major flooding or anything that kind of takes more of the city down than just electricity, that we need to know that internally, we have our plan together, that we can respond as well to Oakland County, who will then eventually take over our disaster. Typically, what happens, an emergency operation plan is designed for more of a major disaster, which is basically means that the city can no longer, is no longer capable of taking care of the issue itself. For instance, let's take the issue with the storm. Had we moved, had it been worse, or there had been major flooding, or more power lines and fires had happened, we may have not been able to control things as they were. But because it was a short period of time, and because we were able to kind of control that, minus the few hours in the middle of the night, we were able to kind of hold things together. But in a more of a, we see the flooding that happened out east or whatnot, that becomes a time where your resources within your community are exhausted, and we call on the county for help. And what also happened, and a question that happened with us over the summer, was that one of the things that we talked about was that typically, this emergency plan does not get instituted until there is a disaster declared, meaning that we are no longer able to support ourselves. But what happened over the course of the summer with the July outage as well as the storm, was that we still had a lot of the plan that could have, that should be enacted, and we did do that, but it brought questions about within our own department heads, at what point do we do that? So, it was interesting conversations around staff table about how we use this plan, even when it's not necessarily an official disaster area. There are many facets that we are looking at in our operations plan to make sure that we are consistent and that we don't need to update areas. In specifics, some policies and procedures are going to be addressed. Our communication tool, which is the main component of tonight's presentation, looking at supplies, supplies and equipment, as well as general training, which will include the council members. Chief Sullivan is the lead person when it comes to this emergency operations plan, will be leading a lot of these changes. But for now, for tonight, our main focus is an update on our communications plan. One of the things to, beyond that, is that when we, whenever there is a disaster or something bad happens, you always take a look at what could you do differently? And we did find a lot of policies and procedures that we did want to tweak a little bit, in particular in the communication area, but also as well as chain of command and things of that nature. But moving on, more toward the communication part of this plan. We have identified, instinctively, we know exactly who needs to be contacted, but I think, again, with the two issues that happened pretty much side by side each other this summer, we felt that we needed a more identified cohesive plan. So, what we did is we created a communications policy that council received in their packet, and residents can see it online. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we have designed for that. One of the things that we talked about too, which I didn't really talk about necessarily in this PowerPoint, was identifying what we call as a PIO, or Public Information Officer, so that one person is sending out that consistent message and making sure that we're all on the same page, so that, you know, if the media wants to contact somebody, you're not getting three different responses to the same issue. So, what we've identified are three media components that need to be notified of where we are within our emergency, newspaper, television, and radio. And what we'll do is that the city manager will keep the database of the most up-to-date media contact list that we use on a daily basis to know that that's who we go and move forward with. I think the website was also, I think you went too fast for me. That's okay. The city website, one of the things that we want to do is ensure that anytime that there is any kind of emergency, that our front page of our website will kind of be taken over by that information, and it will always be on the front, so it's easily accessible and people can read it right away, as well as our cable station, as available. The other thing that we want to look at, and that was mentioned in our website discussion, was looking at a designated emergency management notification system, whether that be an email blast, a phone, like such as a Nixle system, or for those who have children in the school system, they have the robo-calls. We're looking into all of those options as well to reach out to as many residents as possible in a time when they need information. One of the things too, that we really focused on, which was really kind of what threw us kind of into the point where we needed to really look at our communication plan, is that both incidences in July and the storm over Labor Day, our technology was compromised, meaning that at some point in time, if you didn't have electricity, you didn't have a phone, you didn't have a cellphone, you didn't have a computer, you couldn't access our website or any newspapers if you didn't have a paper newspaper delivered to your door. So, staff spent the majority of our time really focused on how would we try to communicate with residents when technology does not exist. We did talk about that, and one of the reasons why we were focused on only, on the lack of technology, is that most disasters will include some form of technology compromise, and that could be, again, electricity, cellphone towers don't work anymore, especially in a time when people are using cellphones rather than a landline. So, what we looked at is how would we communicate, and how can we educate our residents in how we're going to communicate? So, what we came up with is kind of a little cheesy, but it can work, and it's go where you vote for your note. Meaning, what we're looking at is creating a program that focuses on being able to communicate with residents very quickly, in that when technology is compromised, that everybody has a polling location, which most often is also walkable. Therefore, if, if, if the disaster is as bad as it could be, we were very fortunate that both incidents, incidents this summer were confined, that they would be at each polling station. Now, Brandon will probably post more in other locations as well, but in effort for education, we want to try to get it in people's minds, that they go where they vote for their note, so that way, if they do not have technology, they know where they can get their updates in case of a, of a major disaster. And so, we're hoping to take a look at doing some communication and some media regarding that, especially during our current election that we have in November, and brochure not only on, you can flip, not only on where you're, where you go to get that information, but family preparedness for emergency management. So, a little education on, on how you can help your family be prepared for that, but then again, as well, know where you can get your information. So, that was kind of a thought process that staff had, again, really focused on, that technology is great when you have it, but we had a real wake-up call two times this summer that our technology was compromised. And so, even for City Hall, it hadn't been for the ability to use generators at some point or whatnot, and that's another component, we may not have the tools even to communicate at that point. So, handwritten notes may be what, what people are getting, but at least we know, and we can educate residents on where, where they can get that information. So, we're hoping to roll that out during the election, so people can have that information. So, for those of you who are here, know that go where you vote for your note. So, that's where we are at. So, again, this is one piece of our emergency management plan. It last, was last updated, I think, in late 2009, so we're right where we should be in continuing our updates, and we'll continue to work at making sure that we are cohesive during that time where we need to know where everything is and where we're going. So, are there any questions from city council regarding this kind of non-communication tool, or non-technology tool?
Questions of council? Nope.
Alright, look for more information. Thank you.
Thanks, April. Appreciate it. Alright. Our final presentation this evening is from the DDA. Our final presentation this evening is from the DDA. I see Chris, Chris, any, what's happening in downtown? Lots of things.
More than you can imagine. More than I can tell you in three minutes. Sorry.
And yet, that's all I'm giving you. Pardon me? I said, and yet, that's all you're getting. And that's all I'm getting, that's okay. We try to communicate regularly.
Hit the beat.
Hit the beat, oh, that's right, she told me that. Okay. Okay. All right, hang on, I'm sorry. All right. So I'm not Michelle Foster, I'm Chris Hughes, I'm the Communications and Marketing Manager from the Ferndale DDA. Michelle couldn't make it, so I'm pin chitting tonight, council, mayor and city manager and everybody that's around, so I'm here for a little update. And we're going to just start with, if I can get the right key here, help me sir, I messed up already. Thank you. All right, here we go. Most important thing on tap coming up is this Wednesday, we have a special edition for entrepreneurs at every stage of Fernet and Ignite combined. It's going to be at 5:30 PM at Go Comedy. This is our regular monthly B2B networking that we host for downtown businesses, but this is one that we've expanded to include our Ignite participants and everybody all coming in the room together to learn more about the Moore Program, which is a program that puts all the state resources and all the resources and, and shares them with all, it's a marriage between resources and needs. So if you're thinking about going into a business, if you're already in business and you need some help in another direction, if you're about ready to take the leap, please come and join us, it's totally free and we've got a great speaker, Bonnie Fahum, from the Moore Program. And we'll go through a program called Insight, which helps you identify your specific needs and direct you to the right places. I'm going to steal a little bit of the city's general thunder, because I love to talk about our plug-in stations. We now have two of them, if everybody doesn't know by now. One is in the Woodington parking lot, the other is in the library parking lot. You just, if you're driving a PEV, you just pull in, plug in, and you can charge it for free. And we are very proud to have been a part, part of that with the city and together worked with DTE and the Department of Energy to bring these charging stations to downtown Ferndale, once again, putting us on the cutting edge. Our wayfinding signs, they, if you haven't noticed them, then you must not have been downtown, because they're quite significant, they are gorgeous at night, they light up the street, we love them. The most exciting thing about the wayfinding signs is seeing people actually use them. People reading the history of downtown Ferndale, going to the kiosks, finding the business they're looking for. And then, these people I happened to catch, they were at the Dream Cruise and they were reading about Foley Mansfield and the whole Porter School and the property over there, and it was so much fun to be the history teacher for a minute, because I don't get to do that very often. The next step in this Preserve America grant that paid for this is our audio tours. They will be coming soon and you'll be able to access them on any smartphone with a QR code that is on those, on the signs now. We'll be having the historical tours, green tour and an art tour. And there, we've had some input from PJ Jacobs at Go Comedy, so these are tours that will keep you awake and inform you, all in the same, same breath. We'd like to welcome a new partner, and we're very happy to have them on board, the very generous partner, Motor City Casino Hotel. You may have seen the name on the banners recently at the DIY and the Funky Ferndale Art Fair. That was just the beginning of a long-term relationship with the Motor City Casino Hotel that includes assistance for Holiday Ice Festival, which is going to be awesome this year, Ferndale Pride and a very exciting public art project. The agreement came to be via the Woodward Avenue Action Association, and we are very happy that Motor City Casino loves us because we love them. And we also now have a business update. There have been several new businesses that have made their home in downtown Ferndale recently. Finally, for those who love bobbles, bangles and bright shiny things, we've got a fine jewelry and gift gallery on Ferndale. That's Zari Mercosian, he's right at the corner of Woodward and Nine. We also have, well, we've had it, that Am is now re-energized and open more for lunch and dinner, so hop in there and, and get something good to eat. Eight Degrees Plato is a craft beer store that's going to be opening soon, along with the Old Post. It will soon be the new Woodward Imperial, which is going to be a California-style bar. And if you haven't been in there, they're making gorgeous bench seating and they are refurbishing that building, which is very exciting. It's always great to have a building return to its earliest state. So we're happy to have, welcome all of them. And there's more coming as well. This is the part of the, of the, where we encourage people, get out your calendars and new pens, because we've got some fun stuff coming up. On October 29th, oh, I got the wrong slide, sorry. It's October 29th, in downtown Ferndale, we'll be having trick-or-treating for kids. You have to wear a costume, but all the merchants will be hanging out the sign with the right date on it. So when you see it, go on in and trick-or-treat and have a good time in downtown Ferndale. Rest Belt Market will be doing something special that day for the kids, so it'll be a just, just a nice way to get one more day's use out of those costumes that all you parents worked so hard to create. And then we also have, I want to give a little plug for November, we're going to get the holidays going and glowing with Light the Town on Thursday, November 17th. This will be our earliest launch ever to the holiday season, and it's intended to remind everyone that when you're shopping, there's no place like your hometown downtown Ferndale. So we encourage everybody to mark that on their calendar, the 29th, and of course, please join us on Wednesday if you're thinking about being in business, because we like all the new businesses we can get. And that's it, thank you. Thanks, Chris. As always, a lot to do in downtown Ferndale. Thanks for highlighting much of it. All right, that concludes our presentations for this evening. The next item of business on our agenda are a series of presentations, but we will begin these presentat, I mean, a series of public hearings, but we will begin the public hearings with a presentation on the scope of these projects. I'm going to ask Derek Delacorte, our Director of Community and Economic Development, as well as representatives of Garden Fresh Gourmet, to briefly give an overview of the three following public hearings.
Yeah, have a seat, guys.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, how are you?
Wonderful. How are you?
Good evening, I don't know how long we're going to be here, so I thought we would sit. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Good evening, mayor, council. I think is everybody aware, is where I'm here with Mr. Aronson from Garden Fresh Salsa and John Lattella, their Chief Operating Officer. We're here tonight to talk to you about a new project that Garden Fresh has moved forward recently within the city that includes reinvestment in their existing location and the purchase of a new, a new facility at 1220 East Nine Mile Road. The reason we're here tonight is to talk to council about the potential to establish an industrial development district at 1220 East Nine Mile, excuse me, and the, a new IFEC certificate at both 1505 and 1220. I've asked the representatives of the Garden Fresh to be here tonight to briefly walk through their project, what they're proposing and what they plan as far as investment in the community. So I'll turn it over to Jack now to go through what their project is.
Good evening, council. John's going to go over most of the financial issues. I think most of the people know, I grew up in Ferndale, graduated in 71. My wife went to St. James, we started on Woodward Avenue, moved over to Woodward Heights and then purchased some vacant land on Bonner Street where we built our present plant. And as we've grown, so has our footprint there. But our biggest problem is, we're a little landlocked, so we have to do things a little differently. We almost had about six acres purchased next door. They, it was appraised for 1.2 million, and of course, they knew we needed it, so they wanted 1.8. And we almost, we're still, still going to go forward with that deal, but at the last minute, they also wanted after we closed, four months free rent and to stay another six months if they needed to, at $5,000 a month. But that's the kind of issues we're having. We're looking at buying a little piece going in our parking lot, a little bitty building that was appraised for 98. They want $240,000 for that, because we want it. So we certainly don't want to pay taxes on 240,000 for a piece of property that's worth 90. But those are some of the issues we're having. And to stay competitive in the marketplace, where we've brought in two high-pressure processing machines, there's only 100 in the world, we were the sixth company in the United States to own one, and the first privately-held company in North America, and now we've just gotten our second one. It was an investment of about $11 million. For us to stay competitive, we've had to, first off, you know, we've had offers to move and get one big piece of property. Our wishes have always been to stay in Ferndale, I think we've shown that commitment, but we're having to piecemeal the property, which is getting real expensive. We had to bring electric in from the pole for our HPP machine, it cost us $350,000. We have no pressure at that part of Ferndale. It's always been an issue with the fire department, because they said we're at the end of the line, so we're bringing in boosters and pumps to bring up the pressure at no cost to the city. You know, we're, we are the ones that finance that, but it's just where we're at and one of those issues. People are, and some people, I read some emails this morning, are under misconception that we don't want to pay taxes, you know, and that's not true. We, I think with real and personal property taxes, last year spent $165,000 in taxes. Personal property for people here that don't know it is, in a business like ours, unlike the home, I pay taxes on every table, every pencil, every piece of equipment, every vehicle, everything inside my plant. And I believe that was $95,000 last year, and we're buying $3 million, $4 million pieces of equipment, and that personal property tax is getting extremely expensive. So we're not asking for forgiveness on the $165,000 we pay, but as we invest, I think John can go over that with you, as we invest, another 13 million, I think we've already invested 25 million. And by the way, for those that need some proof of our commitment to this town, we've been offered $100 million cash to sell our company by one of the largest food companies in the country. They were going to move it to Virginia, we're going to have 400 people and their families to lose their jobs, and, you know, it's something we couldn't do. So we have a strong commitment and we want to continue, and we've got some great plans and we hope that you'll give us some consideration. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Jack.
Yeah, so, so like I said, we're, we're here for all the best reasons tonight. You have a company in Garden Fresh that's been a, a constant partner with the city throughout its growth. The new investment they're looking at over the next two years amounts to approximately $14 million at the two facilities. The PA, the PA 198 process that's being proposed tonight allows the city to abate approximately 50% of their local taxes over a 12-year period on that investment that they're proposing to make in the next two years. The project's in combination, it proposes, or, or propose to, to create 75 to 100 new jobs. Garden Fresh is already our, our largest employer, or pretty sure they're our largest employer at the city at this point. The investment applications that are in front of you for both locations, and I'm sure we'll go through them in detail as we go through the next three agenda items, have been reviewed by the county assessor, there's tax tables in there detailing what the total investment in taxes to the local jurisdictions would be without the abatement, what they will be with the abatement. The city has a tax abatement policy that it follows. Both of these applications, or at least the IFEC applications, have been reviewed against that policy. The project at 1505 clearly qualifies for the 12-year abatement, in fact, far exceeds the policy that's in place. The application specifically for 1220 East Nine Mile, I think falls about $400,000 short in investment, and it creates the necessary jobs. But when you look at these, this, this is really one project, one company, one project. And the project in total far surpasses any of the city's existing policies in regards to length of the abatement. So staff is proposing and, and agrees with the applicant in the request for the 12-year abatement. Again, the, both applications have been reviewed by the Oakland County Assessing Department. Including, included in your packet for the individual abatement applications is the city's standard certificate agreement, which basically sets and defines the criteria by which Garden Fresh has to perform to earn the abatement over the 12 years. There's details in there as far as what happens if the investment isn't made, if the appropriate job creation isn't, isn't made, and allows the city to claw back any abated taxes if those criteria are not met. That is a standard agreement that the city requires and, and Garden Fresh has reviewed. I don't believe they have any issue with it. I don't want to get in too much detail about each agenda item. The 198 process, again, again, it only abates 50% of local jurisdictional taxes on new investment. It does not abate previous investment, it does not abate previous purchase, and it only abates 50% of that new investment. The other 50% still goes to all of the local jurisdictions, including the city's general fund of that new investment. The idea behind a 198, and especially in this instance, it's a partnership between the city and an established corporation. The idea is, is that with that abatement, and John can speak to it a little bit if, if council wants to know more, is that with that abatement, the company is allowed to invest additional money in the city. These are abatements that are offered by every city that Garden Fresh does business with as an incentive to do business and to locate their investment in those communities. I think in this instance, Jack's made it pretty clear, abatement or not, he's made the investment in this community, is going to stay here. I think part of that partnership with the city is, is to utilize this type of tool to allow them to continue to make investments and grow within the community. So with that, I think I'm going to stop on the overall project and what the 198 policy is. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions on the, the overarching project or the policy and any individual questions on the public hearings related to the three requests.
Are there any questions of council, just on the overview of, that has been presented?
I have a lot more specific questions, but I can...
As we get into, yeah, we'll, we'll have discussion on each individual item during the public hearings, but just on, on what has been presented. All right, very good. Anything else to add, gentlemen?
No, sit. Good evening, council. My name is John Lattella, I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Garden Fresh, one of Jack's partners. One of the things I just wanted to add, and Jack briefly touched on it, with regards to how we're landlocked in terms of a business. What I would encourage actually, if anybody does have any questions, I don't know how many of you have actually been out to the site, I would encourage you to actually come out to the site, we'll get, take you on a tour, we'll show you the new building that we just moved into at 1220 Nine Mile Road and go over that. I think it's pretty self-explanatory when you look at it, and you know, we could sit up here, and I know Jack, one of the other things he talked about, you know, we have a, a production facility in Engster where we run hummus out of, we're looking to move that facility here to Bonner, so that we can be all under one roof. In a perfect world, we'd have a perfectly square, 100,000 square foot building on, on one location that we could house everything, but, you know, unfortunately, that, that doesn't exist. And as Jack stated, him and Annette both grew up in the area, they're both, you know, they want to keep the business here, we all want to keep the business here. And I don't think this is an issue of us threatening that we'd move somewhere else, because quite frankly, we wouldn't. Again, I would love for each and every one of you to make a trip out to, to Garden Fresh so we can give you a tour. And then just lastly, I'd like to say, everybody should be very proud with the individuals that work for the city of Ferndale. It's been a pleasure working with Derek Delacorte. He's done a, I, I'll have to say, within the past six months, the service that he's given us is probably better than what, and I don't want to put anybody under the bus from before, but it's, it's been great working with him and we've gotten quick response on everything that we've sought and looked for, so.
Very much appreciate hearing that. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so that concludes the presentation, unless there's any other comments or questions to council. What we're going to have now is a series of three public hearings. I will call each public hearing to order, and members of the community are welcome to come up, and similar to how we would do call the audience, I'll give you three minutes to come up and make any comments that you would like to make on these, on these applications. If you have specific questions, we will try to address them. If you have, however, just comments in general, this isn't a debate, this is your opportunity to express to us, the, the city representatives, your feelings on these applications. Councilman Lennon, however, I think you want to...
Yes, because I'm employee of Garden Fresh, I'm going to have to accuse myself from item 5B, 5C and 5D.
All right. Councilman, just for those of you who don't know, Councilman Lennon works for Garden Fresh Gourmet, and he will not be participating in the debate or the vote on these three items. Thank you, Councilman Lennon. All right, so I want to open the... All right, so I want to open the public hearing on the consideration to establish an industrial development district at twelve twenty East Nine Mile Road. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this request? Good evening, Kay.
Kay Watson, thirty-two oh nine Edmond. Okay, when they were talking about the abatement on the new investment part...
Yes.
How's this going to affect us, the city? We just passed the headly override because we were short on running our expenditures, and now if we assume part of the rest there, is this going to end up costing the residents more taxes?
Derek, I'll let... If you want to address that first, or I can as well?
Absolutely. The answer is no. It won't cost the residents any more taxes. In fact, with the passing of the headly override, the fifty percent that will still go to local jurisdictions and the general fund, Garden Fresh will end up paying more on that fifty percent than it would have previously. But the general public or the citizens aren't on the hook for any of the abated taxes for the new investment.
And I would reemphasize, this is only an abatement on future existing investment, so it's investment we don't have today. So, we'll get fifty percent less of the addition that we would have got, but we'll still be getting additional monies towards our general fund. Our general fund will actually be increasing under this proposal.
Okay, but I was just concerned, because anytime we have a shortage, we know who takes the hit, the police and fire, and I don't want us to be put in that predicament. Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. Anyone else from the public that would like to address this particular IDD? Jeanne, good evening.
Jeanne Davis, I would just like to thank you for continuing to make this investment in Ferndale. I'm really excited, and I applaud the effort. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then I will close the public hearing on item five B, and open it up to council for comments, questions on this, on this request to establish the IDD at twelve twenty East Nine Mile Road.
I don't have any comments about the IDD district specifically, so...
And again, to be clear, we're creating the district. This isn't yet for the certificate for the tax abatement. This would create the district that would allow us to do that.
But it is opening the door.
But obviously, this would be...
Yes, it's the first step.
This would be the mechanism to allow us to give the abatement.
Well, I'm going to start some of my more detailed questioning here, but I also know that my questions also relate to the other two items that we will be voting on tonight. And some of mine are more high level about why the, this act, the tax abatement policy is the preferred choice for this particular business. I know the state has, used to offer incentives to help businesses do what they're calling economic gardening as part of their retention program, which I support economic gardening. So, why is this preferred over any other tax or incentives out there available for obsolete property, which is one of the properties that you're looking at, obsolete vacant or underutilized? And previously, I think it was under the Oprah Act, so can you talk a little bit about why is this preferred over other options?
But at least for an industrial district, this option is preferred, 198. At its base, it's probably the best performing incentive package that the MEDC has or the state has as far as reinvestment. When you compare it to an Oprah district, an Oprah district just freezes taxes at their current level for the next twelve years. This actually allows an abatement on the additional personal property, which is a bigger incentive for investment and to bring equipment into the community, to continue to purchase real property. The obsolete component of it works pretty much the same between a 198 and an Oprah or any other investment opportunity that's there. The 198 is a true partnership, unlike some other ones that are a hundred percent of personal and none of real. It works in concert with the community, so the community still does see that increased investment in its general fund, and allows the applicant a break on taxes, especially personal. I want to be clear, this is almost easily eighty percent personal investment. New equipment, renovation of buildings, this is not, for the majority of this, this is not on real, this is on increased investment, hardware, tools, equipment. So, for us, it's one that we have within our control, unlike the state's new programs, where they're just now rolling out the rules. This one deals with an abatement in taxes as opposed to a grant or a loan for upfront investment. Mr. Arrington has, I don't believe, has never, and still isn't asking for a loan from the state or a grant to purchase his equipment. He purchases out, it makes the investment out of their own corporation, whereas the new rules, you know, would offer him low-interest loans. So, this is really, for the balance of the project, the best overall tool available to us at this time.
Additional questions?
Well, I have some about the clawbacks, but we, I'll wait and hold that.
I guess I'll just make a couple of comments that I think relate to all three of these, so that I don't have to say them three times. I want to emphasize, this is, you've made, you've mentioned, you made a twenty-five million dollar investment in this city already, which you are paying taxes on. This is an additional thirteen million dollars that you're asking for a fifty percent abatement on. That seems to me a very reasonable request. If you were, in fact, up to up and leave Ferndale, not only would we lose this opportunity, but the twenty-five million original that you've been invested in here. So, you have obviously made a huge and major commitment to Ferndale, and this seems to me a reasonable way for the city, not only to capture the additional taxes that you will pay going forward, but to preserve the tax base that you have already committed to the city. So, I think that's an important point to make. We could lose the whole thing. I think you're modest when you just point out the one example of offer that you had to move your company. I think, if I understand it right, you get offers probably on a regular basis to leave. And in the world that we're playing in, you know, theoretically, it might be great that cities and states don't compete with each other with tax rates and other mechanisms, but that's the reality of it. And so, if Ferndale is going to compete for jobs and investment, then we're going to have to use some of the same economic development tools that other cities and states and countries are using to try to lure people like you from Ferndale. So, I think this just helps us compete in the global marketplace. And number two, it's about jobs. According to your application, within the next two years, this investment will create seventy-five to a hundred new jobs. I want to say guaranteed, I mean, I guess there's no guarantees, but from the city's perspective, if you don't do that, we have the ability to not offer the abatement anymore. And so, in this environment where jobs are so critical, you're already the city's largest employer, and you're going to add up to twenty-five percent more employees, I appreciate the investment that you've made here. I appreciate that you haven't left already, because I know that you've been given other very attractive offers, and so I am supportive of this request.
I... Oh, do you want to move? So, a motion would be in order unless...
I would move that we approve the attached resolution establishing an industrial development district located at twelve twenty East Nine Mile.
Support.
Moved by Galloway and supported by Piana. Any additional questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon? I'm sorry, and Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you very much. That item passes. Public hearing, see consideration of an industrial facility's tax exemption certificate, known as an IFEC, for this same property, twelve twenty East Nine Mile Road. I call the public hearing to order. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this specific request? Mr. House, good evening.
Counsel? Jack, good to see you. I came with prepared statements today, and I'd like to begin my prepared statement, and then I'd like to continue from there. I'm Sean House from one-four-one Spencer. I wanted to share some thoughts about the request before you tonight. We all love Jack Arrington, he's been a blessing and a boon to our city. He's not only a successful businessman, but a philanthropist and a great neighbor. There's nothing bad I can say about Jack or how he runs his business. At this point, I had prepared a statement in opposition to the tax abatement. However, I would like to change at this point in time. Upon hearing some new information about the tax abatement, I was not aware of some of the facts, and that's why I came here tonight, was to learn some of the facts. And, you know, I have to say, I've known Jack, and it's as my father has for a long time. Jack is not only one heck of a businessman, but one heck of a person. He gives a lot back to the community, and he has been specifically geared towards promoting Ferndale for a very long time. And based on what he's been doing, the things that he has available to him, hearing that he has low-interest loans available, but willing to put his own money where his mouth is without taking on low-interest loans, still willing to pay extra taxes, I just think it makes perfect sense to have Jack as a partner for a long time. And I would like to ask the council to give your full support on both public hearings. I know I've been only speaking for one at this point, but I would like to ask for your support. I'm sure one of those emails that you got was probably from me, Jack, bounced around. But the reason why we came here was to learn the information, and sometimes we don't know all the facts until we sit down and discuss it. The only thing I would like to ask, Jack, and this is a personal guarantee on your part, is I'd like you to, if you'd consider it at least, to guarantee that a certain percentage of those jobs will come directly from Ferndale residents.
Well, that's always our first choice, always.
So, I'd like to ask if you'd consider either doing all or a good portion, a good percentage of those jobs go directly to the city of Ferndale to relieve our residents. Aside from that, I ask for council to give full support to both of the matters before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Is there... Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address this issue? Yes, good evening, sir.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alan Sauvay. I live at eleven-twenty East Nine Mile. Actually, Jack, I'm your neighbor over there, over on Nine Mile Road. I'm glad you're there, I really am, because you improved the property already, and it's much nicer. But I am a little objective to this tax incentive to bring... I think we ought to consider that for everybody, to lure businesses into this community. We have to watch our tax bases and how high they are. That was one of the reasons why I opposed the tax increase before. So, as a resident, if I bring in, improve my property, or if other businesses improve their property, bring in new machines and tools, they always have to pay the extra tax. I understand this is money, and I do appreciate him being here. Trust me, I do, I really do. I just, you know, we are being to a point of our taxes, when he says he's not going to have to pay, and we need all the revenue we can get at this point. And if we don't get the revenue, you're going to come after us again for more revenue. And it's, right now, there are a lot of people are probably leaving the community, even businesses. I know we had a lot of large companies, like Cars and Us, left, Steel Plant left, and there was a lot of revenue that we were lost, and perhaps if they were given incentives, they might have stayed. We don't know. But that was, that's our order under the bridge. But that's my opinion, so... But I thank you for being here, Jack, I really do.
Thank you. Any, anyone else from the public that would like to address this request? If not, I will close the public hearing, and ask for comments, questions from council. A motion would be in order first.
Sure. There is a misplaced comma in the motion?
No.
Is that sixteen million?
One point six.
One point six.
So, I move to approve the attached resolution granting an IFEC certificate to Garden Fresh for a twelve-year tax abatement in the amount of one point six million at twelve twenty East Nine Mile, which will create twenty-five to fifty jobs, and to authorize the mayor to sign the IFEC agreement, and further to direct the city clerk to submit the required documents to the state before the October thirty-first, two thousand and eleven deadline for both Garden Fresh salsa locations.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Comments?
Thank you for your strong commitment to Ferndale.
Thank you very much.
I would also make the comment, you know, Alan, you're right, we have lost other businesses, and perhaps these kinds of incentives could have kept them here. But just so that folks don't think this is something special we're doing just because we like Jack, although we do like Jack and we do like Garden Fresh, this is a tool that the city has used in the past with other businesses. In fact, since two thousand and six, the city has given out three other tax abatements in two thousand and six to Progressive Metals, in two thousand and eight to Betterform, and in two thousand and eleven, January of this year, to Search Optics. And we do this strategically, not all the time, but for folks that are willing to make significant investments, and I consider thirteen million dollars or fourteen million dollars a very significant investment, this is a selective but strategic tool that we use. So, this is not a special favor to Jack because he's a nice guy, it's because his proposal makes sense, it's significant, and it's, despite the abatement, an overall positive for Ferndale. And so, that's personally why I support it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers, Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Next would be the consideration of an industrial facility's tax exemption certificate, an IFEC, for the property at one-five-zero-five Bonner, and I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. And from council, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we approve the attached resolution granting an IFEC certificate to Garden Fresh for a twelve-year tax abatement in the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of fifteen oh five Bonner, which will create fifty jobs while maintaining the current two hundred and eighty positions, and authorize the mayor to sign the IFEC agreement, and further direct the city clerk to submit the required documents to the state before October thirty-one, two thousand and eleven deadline for both Garden Fresh salsa locations.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana. Any comments on this item? I think they have been captured in the other items, so... Hearing done, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Mayor, I have one request. Jack?
I'll be able to...
I would like to take you up on your offer of a tour.
Yes.
If, I'll call you to schedule that. Thank you.
Jack, when do I take my tour? Is that tomorrow morning? I'm trying to get along with the process.
All right, we do have an additional public hearing this evening, by the way. We are going to have a public hearing on the issuance of a liquor license, the consideration of a small wine maker license for Fish Hook Distilling Company LLC, also known as Valentine Vodka, to be held with the two thousand and eleven small distiller license located at one-sixty-one Vester Street in Ferndale. I'd like to open the public hearing on that request. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this liquor license request? All right, hearing done, I will close the public hearing. And from council, a motion would be in order on this request.
I move to approve a new small wine maker license for Fish Hook Distilling Company to be held with their two thousand and eleven small distiller license located at one-sixty-one Vester Street, Ferndale and Oakland County.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Other comments, questions? Maybe, I see Derek has left, but maybe to the city manager, just a brief explanation for the public of what it is that Valentine Vodka has requested that we do?
We could share it in...
Or, I'm sorry, Sharon, could you speak it out briefly?
As we know, they are currently distilling vodka, Valentine Vodka, they are now proposing to create signature wines to complement their existing distillery and tasting room. So, they're expanding as well.
So, will we expect additional permits and things to put in the new distillery? I mean, because that's wine fermenting...
Sure.
I don't know too much about the wine making process, but I know what you...
Yes, I would imagine that there will be permitting processes through the community and economic development department.
All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers, Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Our next order of businesses to call the audience, I'd like to thank the audience for their patience this evening, as we went through quite a bit of things on the agenda already. But as you know, this is thirty minutes now and more time later on the agenda, if needed, for the members of the audience to address council on any item that they so choose that's not on the remainder of the agenda. I'll give you an opportunity to speak on those at that appropriate time. Just please state your name and address, or write it on the sheet in the back for the clerk's information. Is there anyone from the audience that would care to address council this evening? Is there anyone from the audience that would care to address council this evening? Good evening, Jeannie.
Hi, Jeannie Davis, President, Ferndale Seniors. I'm here to talk about an event the Ferndale Seniors are hosting. This is the first time that we've hosted a meet and greet for the candidates who are running for office in November. This is going to be on October 12th at 11:00 a.m. at the Culic Community Center. The candidates are yourself, Mayor Coulter, and Ray Willis, who's running, and Mike Lennon is running, Dan Martin is running, and Sherri Wells are all running. They've all been invited. Everyone will be given approximately 10 minutes to give a little talk. We're thinking they might talk about why they want to be on the council, or why you want to be the mayor, to keep it focused. And then after, the candidates will be available for individual questions or for questions from the podium. We're inviting everybody. You don't have to be a senior to come to this. Admission is free. Everybody knows where the Culic Community Center is, and as I say, it starts at 11:00 a.m. And like I say, this is our first thing of this sort, so outside of the mayor-town hall meeting, which will be at the end of the month. So we're hoping everyone attends and makes it a good event.
Thank you, thanks for putting together...
And if you have questions, you want me to give my number?
Please do.
Why not? 248-541-5888. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. Mr. Martin?
Good evening, my name is Dan Martin. I'm at 1447 West Hazelhurst, and I just wanted to make a brief comment also related to the recent issues with DTE and the storm that came through on the emergency communication plan. One of the options that I didn't see expressed in the slides, but I'm sure we would consider and actually hope we have further discussion with DTE as we talk about future planning with them in the meeting coming up in the future, is including significant external partners in that communication plan. In the last storm that came through, much of the communication not, was inconsistent between the city that was working hard and doing a great job managing the crisis, and what was coming from DTE was very disappointing. Most residents, I think, that I talked to heard more from city council people's Facebook sites about what was going on than what was actually put out by DTE. So a focus on the coordination of that communication with significant external partners in those kinds of situations requires a good deal of planning as well, and I certainly wouldn't want it to be excluded and definitely want it to be included, I hope, in the discussions upcoming with DTE this week and ongoing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ann.
Good evening. Hello, hello, Ann Keller, 1024 LeBroy, here in Ferndale and speaking now as the board president for Fern Care Free Clinic, and I am so happy to be here this evening. We are open, the clinic is open. No, thank you, no, no. The board of directors and myself absolutely thank everybody in Ferndale and our surrounding communities for the great support that we have had in getting this clinic up and going, which we did last August, and now to be in our permanent site at 459 East Nine Mile. And to celebrate that, I invite everybody, please, everybody, to come to our grand opening and open house, which is going to be Saturday, October 8, from 10, that'll be the grand opening, 2:00, 4:00 in the afternoon. Please, please come by and see this magnificent clinic. We did our first run-through on Saturday, it works well, we're very, very happy, and we want you to see, we want you to see what we can do when we all get together and we think, you know what, we can do it, and wait till you see what you did. You are going to be, I believe, very, very pleased, and I want everybody pleased to come by and see this. It'll be Saturday, October 8. And once again, the board and I say, thank you for your support. Thank you.
Ann, thank you. Thank you very much. As proud as you are of the building, we're as proud of you for shepherding this for so many years. Thank you so much, Ann. Anyone else from council? Yes, Alan?
Alan Sauvay, 1120 East Nine Mile. I'm here because sidewalk replacement program, you know, I paid 1,100 dollars. I mean, the slab looked nice and is nice and level now, but I still have a problem with water. And I don't know what's the engineering on this, but I can tell you this, I'll give you the, that you look at the pictures, you can tell me what's going to happen when we have, when, you can see what it is, when it's a lot of rain, you really can't walk through it unless you have boots on. And if, when the winter comes and it melts and freezes, I'm going to have a big problem. So I'm here to let you know that if anybody slips, it's not going to be in my bill. And, so here.
Have you, I'm going to ask, have you shared this with Byron? He would, he's, would be the appropriate person to see the pictures and to try to address the problem. Byron, I see you back there. You're okay? Okay. Well, we'll take the pictures from you and make sure that, yeah, thank you, Sherilyn. You have, but you have, you have chatted with DPW, Alan?
What, me?
But you have talked with DPW, with Byron at DPW, made him aware of this?
Byron, I talked to whoever right there, decided what they think replaced. Well, I think I might have to do a long time.
Appreciate it, all right. We'll take a look at it and have someone get back with you.
Now, I did address it when I came to the meeting back then.
Thank you.
What I could do.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address council this evening? All right, I will close, call the audience, and we will move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items that are listed are considered routine by the city council, and we enact all of these with one motion, but I will read them for the record. Consent agenda item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 12, 2011. B, approval of smart municipal and community credits for fiscal year 2012. C, approval to appoint the DPW supervisor, Sean Slocum, as the alternate to represent the city of Ferndale on the Board of Trustees of SACRA for the year beginning July 1, 2011. D, approval of the one-year agreement with the city of Oak Park to use the city's southwest storage yard as a transfer site for leaves, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Item E, approval of the one-year agreement with the city of Pleasant Ridge to use the city's southwest storage yard as a transfer site for leaves, and again, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. F, approval of the cost participation agreement with the Board of Oakland County Road Commissioners to resurface I-696 service drive west and east of Huron Street in fiscal year 2012, and to charge the city's share of the expense, estimated at $24,836, to the Major Streets Fund. G, approval to adopt a resolution authorizing travel to the Michigan Municipal League's 2011 convention for Mayor Coulter and councilwoman Piana, as submitted by the city clerk. H, approval to require the owners of 2730 Burdette Avenue, 621 West Oak Ridge, and 2020 Burdette to replace deteriorated sidewalk flags by October 28, 2011, as submitted by the DPW director. I, approval of a contract with the Oakland County for the election canvassing services, as submitted by our city clerk. And J, approval of the bills and payrolls, as certified by the city manager, to be paid, subject to review by the council financial committee. Are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda this evening? If not, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Are there any comments, questions about the consent agenda this evening? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Great face.
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Our next order of business is the regular agenda. Item A, appointment of Katherine Graca, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, to the beautification committee for a term ending December 31, 2012. A motion would be in order.
Let me get to it. I would move that we confirm the appointment of Katharina Graca to the beautification commission for a term ending December 31, 2012.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana. And I believe Katherine is the one who received the award tonight and was so inspired she wanted to join the commission, so we appreciate her willingness to do that. Any other questions or comments about this item? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that appointment is confirmed. Item B on a regular agenda is the consideration to amend the concessionaire license for Charity Mendoza of Detroit Underdog. This item has been before us before. Madam Clerk, do you want to introduce this item?
Quickly, your honor, last meeting, we talked about this, and there was some miscommunication between the petitioner and the city staff about where exactly this location was going to be. Our understanding was that it was going to be directly behind Rosie's, which created some safety concerns with that intersection at West Troy and Nine Mile area. Anyway, they have since, the petitioner has since clarified that they plan to be behind the apartment building that is adjacent to Rosie's to the east. The police chief met with the petitioner at the site, thoroughly reviewed it, the DDA reviewed the clarified petition, and no one has any objections to the new location to be operational Wednesday through Sunday nights, midnight to 3:00 a.m.
Thank you. So just question, I suppose, so the police chief, now that we've clarified this site, your concerns about traffic patterns and whatnot are addressed?
That's correct, and I'm in with the individual at the site, I reviewed it, my concern would be that we don't have a noise issue, which definitely we will, and we don't have the people standing in the road right, indicated that we could there, very, very, of those issues, but it's, 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 by no exception.
Thank you. I would also point out, I talked to Mr. Kramer, the owner of Rosie's, today. His approval is obviously not required for this, but it came up at the last meeting, what he thought of this, and Mr. Kramer is supportive of the application. This does not compete with the hours that he sells food, and he actually thought this would be a benefit to his customers who were there after he stopped serving food, that might help get something in their stomach before they went home. So he was supportive of the application as well. A motion would be in order at this point. Council is so inclined.
I would move that we adopt a resolution amending concessionaire license for Charity Mendoza of Detroit Underdog to additionally allow operation on the north side of West Troy, behind 262 West Troy, where the sidewalk is 15 feet wide on Wednesday through Sunday, midnight until 3:00 a.m.
Is there support? Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Questions or comments of council?
I have some comments. Again, can you just kind of go over the city clerk and the city manager, when you plan to present back to council with the DDA's support and help, when to look at the concessionaire's license? I'm a little weary on having all these changes come to council, and while I'm very supportive of entrepreneurial efforts by new concessionaires and new businesses, one of the consequences of allowing one vendor, sort of, you know, we have one vendor who is looking at all these new spots and testing them out. So while I'm supportive of that, one of the consequences is we're kind of letting monopoly create on these corners. So this is one concern that I have. So I would just say that while I'm generally supportive, I'm, you know, we need to let things lie for a little bit.
If I may, in preliminary discussions with the DDA, locations for vendors is certainly a priority topic to be discussed. My hope is that we will have recommendations to the ordinance committee by January so that council can look at this late January, early February, before the season rolls around again. But, but location and who is where and how it's grouped or not grouped, those are, those are questions the DDA is interested in exploring.
The only comments I have.
And so I guess my comment is, you know, to your point, you're right, we've kind of been all over the place. Because this is a relatively new phenomenon for the city this year, it doesn't surprise me that concessionaires are going to test out one, find out it doesn't work, try another. We're all sort of trying to figure out what are the locations that work. Hopefully, over the winter, Sherilyn, working with the DDA, will be able to be more precise, and working with the vendors, by the way. You guys are the ones that are out there and know what spots are going to work and whatnot. So it doesn't surprise me that you've had to move around a little, that doesn't disappoint me. I just want to make sure, as you, Sherilyn, as you study this over the, over the, over the winter, that we do identify specific spots and specific criteria, that all vendors and concessionaires will have a good understanding going into the spring season of what's expected. But this was sort of our test pilot year, and so there's been some bumps, but I appreciate you sticking with it. We're, again, still happy that you're here and selling dogs in town, so. Any additional comments or questions? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Yes, from anybody, including the audience, Sherri, thanks.
Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. I did talk with them after they were here last time and expressed, and asked some questions. I certainly agree with you that having a little more food and a little more time between midnight and 3:00, for those who've been drinking and otherwise may have an empty stomach, and they also promised to keep these loud mouths full of hot dogs for us, because we get quite a bit of noise just from the people having to go out and smoke. We can hear that. Between 12:00 and 3:00, we have gotten a lot of noise down the street, and if they're eating hot dogs before they go down, maybe they'll be settled enough to be a little quieter when they go to their cars parked in front of our houses. So I think we can be willing to give it a try and see if they can, can keep it, the noise down. There's a lot of jaywalking goes around there all time, day or night. I've seen three people actually look around at traffic during the day to see what might be coming, because it is an awful dangerous corner. So we'll see how that goes, too, but I'm sure that the Ferndale Police are also going to be taking a look to see how it's going for the first few weeks. So we'll cross our fingers and...
Please keep the meeting. Any additional comments on this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Our next item of business is item D, consideration of court, city hall, and police station HVAC system. And I think, city manager, are you going to introduce this item?
I have Byron from DPW, and we'll comment on this particular...
Did I skip somebody? Oh, oh, pardon me, see?
Want to go back to C?
I skipped item C on the agenda, excuse me. Well, let me back up one. Item C on the agenda is the consideration of an amendment to council rules and procedures to eliminate the liaison reports. And that was actually introduced by me, because as I've been running meetings now since February, it's occurred to me that this item that is on our agenda, item nine, council liaison reports is on there, and by virtue of our, of our ordinances, which is an odd way to dictate that, but we don't always have these items, and when there are, a number of us on council are on a number of boards and commissions, not just these, but on other ones as well, and it just occurred to me that there's an opportunity for us to share what we're working on and with committees that we're involved with during our call to council. So this seemed a redundant part of the agenda to me, and I am just, it's a minor item, but I'm, just to help streamline our agenda, I'm asking for council's consideration to remove the permanent council liaisons report portion of our agenda, and include that in your, call the council if necessary. One of the things residents may not know, however, is that the mayors can't make motions. So I can't actually move this, even though I'm bringing it to you, so if you're so inclined, a motion would be appropriate at this time.
I move to adopt the amended rules of procedure to eliminate council liaison reports and council appointee reports from, to section two, meaning procedure two, order of business.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Lennon. Is there any additional comments on this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Thank you, council. Now, item D, consideration of the court, city hall, and police station HVAC system. And now I will turn to April McGrath, our city manager. And now, I'm sorry, and you want to turn this over to Byron, don't you?
Both of us, yeah, both of us. Byron's working his way toward the front.
Byron's working his way toward the front here to talk about this. A little history of why this is brought before you. Earlier this summer, the HVAC system did break down at city hall and has cost almost as much to repair it as to get a new system. And so as Byron from DPW had looked at getting quotes for the new system, the interim city manager, Mark Wolinweber, had offered to maybe take a look at going green, looking at the geothermal system that happened at the library. So what you have before you is actually two motions, of which we'll talk about over the course of the next few minutes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Byron.
Thank you. I do have Chad House here from Siemens. They're a pre-renewal maintenance contractor. We're under contract with them. He's going to, after I speak a little bit, he's going to give a little overview of the report, explaining the need to retrofit the city hall and perhaps the court. Just as background, the original equipment, the equipment here is originally from the building of the city hall in 1964. Last three years, we've spent almost $23,000 in repairs just at the city hall. Because of that, we, in the fiscal 2012 budget, had recommended that we replace the units, the entire HVAC system. And so it was put in the public improvement fund. And then in June, one of the compressors, one of the two compressors broke, and we're looking at a $15,000 change bill to do that. Now, we held off on that because we didn't know what direction. At the time, the interim city manager, Mr. Wolinweber, posed the idea of, to go in a different direction. So we held off on that. The $15,000 would actually be included in the $79,000 to retrofit this building. So, but we didn't want to expend that until we could get some direction. There is funding of 100, and on top of that, the court building, almost $60,000 for that. Combined, it's $147,000 that we put in the fund. But the most urgent need is to do something here. We were running the one unit continuously to air condition the upper level of the city hall, the unit that serves downstairs. We're going to have to do something, so we're looking for some direction from the council. If the council decides to go and look at a green solution, we're going to have to get some assistance from a consultant at an estimated price of $5,000. Going green, and that's just ballpark, we're over $700,000. So what I want to lead into now is just Chad House, he just wants to give you a little overview of the need to do something here at city hall.
Thanks, Mr. House.
Thank you. Byron, so I'm Chad House, representing Siemens. You do have, you know, original equipment in this building. You're basically, you're working on borrowed time. You know, as Byron mentioned, you know, one of the compressors in one of the units here has failed. Parts are not available for these units. It's old refrigerant. So with the proposed replacement of this project, you'd be, you know, up to the new technology. The units would be more energy efficient. You know, it's going to reduce your long-term service. You know, that's Byron said he's really spent a lot of money on over the years maintaining these units, so.
What was the $15,000 figure that you quoted, Byron?
It was the compressor.
That was for the compressor? And that's included in the total...
Yeah, that basically would go away. It's all included in the proposed replacement project, so. Probably the problem you have is, you know, these equipment's so old that you can't even get parts for them anymore. So it's just...
Are there questions of counsel, just, I mean, just to clarify the need?
I mean, the need has been demonstrated in the pictures and the fact that this building is significantly warmer in certain parts of the building, because one part of the HVAC system is non-functional.
Well, I mean, we have to do something. I don't think there's any question about that. Where did we come up with the $725,000 ballpark estimate?
That's just estimated cost. You know, you're going to have to, if you're going to look at a whole building system retrofit, you're going to need to get a consulting engineer to kind of give you, you know, some recommendations. From there, if they decide there's a further need for a different solution, then they're going to have to get time invested as far as, you know, an engineered solution, draw up some plans, and, you know, basically provide a whole engineered new system for you.
I mean, I guess the only question I have about that, and I forget the numbers exactly, but that number seems really high compared to what the library did. You know, the library put in a system, I don't think, I don't know, but I don't think they spent $725,000 for their project, did they? Or...
No, that was for, that's basically, the $725 was basically an estimated cost to get it engineered with the new mechanical system installed. So if you look at the library, which has spent as far as engineering fees and the total mechanical package, that's probably the better comparison, which you got to look at.
Do you have any idea what that number was?
I don't.
HVAC systems are not my forte. Can you explain the difference between the unit that you're proposing at $80,000 versus the geothermal? Is there another in-between, like, green system? Like, the geothermal heating system is like the Cadillac of green systems? This is how I'm thinking in my head, because I don't know anything about HVACs. Is there anything else in between?
Well, with a geothermal, you actually have additional equipment. I mean, you've got either wells or whatever. You know, I think the library has got 200 to 300 wells with heat pumps in the building. This building, you have three or four HVAC equipment that you have to maintain, whereas the library, you're going to have up to 20 pieces of equipment to maintain. So, I mean, it all factors into it.
Which is asking, you know, is there something in the middle where you can go through the extreme?
Not really.
Okay.
Not really.
There you go, then.
What you've got here is pretty, I mean, it's pretty basic, you know, for this type of building application.
You know, it's a couple of units that serve the building in different zones, different areas.
Would it be safe to assume, though, that with the new equipment that we were getting, that there'll be some energy savings just from the fact that it's newer?
Correct.
I mean, are they, you know, household appliances or furnaces are Energy Star rated? Are these Energy Star or some commercial equivalent?
Yes, they are. Yep.
And what is the cost recovery on the $80,000, and what would be the cost recovery on the geothermal?
Can't answer the geothermal, because that needs to be further studied. And, you know, as far as, there really wasn't an energy calculation done as far as an equipment replacement. I can tell you, you know, if you look at HVAC equipment, you know, it's the SEER rating that is, plays a factor. I think the equipment that's installed now is probably a six or a seven SEER. Equipment's being proposed to be replaced would be 13, so.
Some more capacity and...
More capacity, more efficient.
Okay, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, the differential here seems pretty dramatic. 79 versus perhaps 725,000. But if the cost savings or the, you know, the cost recovery on it is shorter on the geothermal, then actually, that's the better deal. So if we start, if we pay for that system in two years with the geothermal and start realizing savings in the third year, and we only pay for the retrofit in six years and start saving after that a less, a smaller amount, then that's the more costly system, right? So, I don't know. I mean, the easy answer, I guess, is to go with the 79,000 if managed less. I'm not sure it's, I have enough information to say it's the better solution. But we need to have the thing done for next month, so.
Would the, would the approximately $5,000 consultant fee, would that be necessary to calculate what Councilman Galloway is asking for, the payback period and...
Probably not.
Be more or less?
Probably less.
Okay.
You know, less. But the 5,000, you know, with the 5,000, that's basically based on, you know, a consultant come in, give you some recommendations as far as, yeah, geothermal would apply, no, I mean, you're going to be spending more money than, you know, what the payback would be. So that's what the 5,000 would cover.
Are there any trade groups or, you know, websites that you're aware of that we could just, you know, sort of do a little online research ourselves to determine what?
Sure there is, but, you know, probably the best thing to do is kind of base the experiences with, you know, what went through on the library just recently, in the last couple of years.
Well, you know, the city of Ferndale is part of the regional energy office. There could be some information provided through there. I also know we used to be a member of ICLE, and I can't remember who that was, but it's the International Council, oh, boy, Environmental something. But they have these online calculators, which you can punch in your energy costs and then sort of get an estimate on that. So there are some free tools out there. If they go the deep, if they go as detailed that we need in order to make informed decision, I don't know. So we may make progress in some areas, but not enough to get us to a complete decision about that. I mean, from my perspective, you know, we're really at this crossroads of wanting to be a, make progress on being a green community and decreasing our energy efficiency, you know, increasing our energy efficiency, but the cost factors do it. And I know it makes sense, you know, when you hear it in your head, if it, you have a higher return of investment with geothermal, but the initial outlay is so high.
Well, I agree with you. Several hundred thousands. I'd be happy to climb to go 79,000. I mean, that just doesn't make so much sense right now, but, I mean, we are trying to lead. But I'm not, I need some more information, and I'm not ready to vote on a $700,000.
Well, yeah. I'm not even ready to vote on $5,000 for a consulting fee. I'm not, I'd like to see what other options are out there. If we wanted to say, these are options out there to look at it. I bet there's grants. I bet there's partnerships. But I also know that route extends the timeline in order to bring those funds in, and so might not be in line with actually getting the HVAC system up and working by springtime before it gets hot again.
Well, what staff could do is find out from Siemens and Byron if there, if we could get some kind of cost analysis on how much we would save with the geothermal to give us some idea of the cost savings and note the difference. It might be a starting point.
Do we even have that for the one that costs 80,000? The proposed, you know, energy efficiency savings over time on that?
We can get that as well.
That would be...
I think that's a starting point for our discussion, is seeing what our cost savings are between the two systems. We ought to be able to get some information from the people who installed the library or...
I, I, I'd want to be clear, though. I'm interested in exploring this, because I have a feeling we're going to have other capital expenditures that we're going to want to green, and we'll want to have some more outlets in order to, you know, come up with the information that we're looking for. But mostly for me, you know, the 750,000 outlay, I mean, we can't, we can't take that on.
No.
I guess that was going to be my question. We have $147,000 in an HVAC, in a fund to improve HVAC. How would, even, even if we were to determine that the, over the life of this equipment, that, you know, the savings would be greater, would we have the, would we even have the ability to finance a...
Well, I think that, that goes into another conversation, too, about how serious we are about energy and creating maybe an energy revolving loan fund or some sort that focuses on the payback for using green technology. Would we be able to have the $700,000 to do it upfront? We'd have to work with Jane Marie to find that out. I couldn't answer that at this time.
I mean, didn't we borrow money with Siemens before to upgrade stuff?
Okay.
I mean, I think there's ways to do it. I don't think we have enough information to make a decision tonight, is my thought.
So let's be clear, if we don't make a decision tonight, what is the information that we're requesting of staff? Staff, do you feel like you understand what you're...
I'm going to repeat back what I think I heard to make sure. What I'm hearing is that if we could at least have some identified cost savings with the system, the current HVAC system that's being proposed, the $80,000 system, as well as some kind of ballpark figure on a payback on a geothermal system, that would help at least either stop the conversation in one direction or, or not. Does that a fair assessment would be the first step that we could take? And if I can't find that information, then that I guess would re, move us into a different conversation.
Yep.
Good, good.
Do we need a motion table or...
Madam Clerk?
No.
No?
No action taken?
No action taken. All right. Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Regular agenda, Item E, consideration of an ordinance number 1117, amending Chapter 9, Fire Prevention and Protection, to add Article 4, reimbursement for medical services while in custody of the city. City Manager, do you want to introduce that item?
I will turn that over to Chief Sullivan.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Good evening.
Apparently Medicare sometime recently made changes in their ruling regarding transportation of incarcerated patients. They've determined that entity that has incarcerated or is holding the patient in custody is the responsible party for all medical charges, including transport, unless there is a policy or ordinance established stating otherwise. So our carrier biller, AccuMed billing, has recommended that we do so. Mr. Christ has afforded us his expertise and constructed the ordinance to go forward and do that. Currently, we have about $14,187 holding until we have an ordinance in place so the appropriate people can be billed. That's pretty much the nuts of it.
I'll just take no brainer.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Any questions? A motion would be in order, first of all.
You want to go ahead? I move to adopt ordinance number 1117, amending Chapter 9, Fire Prevention, to add Article 4, reimbursement for medical services while in custody of the city, and adopt the resolution establishing fee schedule for services.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Any questions or comments? I guess I would just say this, I appreciate, Chief, that you bring this forward. This is, I think, an example of us looking under every rock to find every dollar that we can to support a very tight budget. It's an additional $14,000 coming to the city that we wouldn't have otherwise captured, and so I appreciate your efforts and the efforts of all of our staff people to look for every last dollar that we can get. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item passes. Do we have to do Number 9 now, Madam Clerk? Or have we formally skipped that?
We can skip that.
I love it. All right. Item, Item 10 would be called to counsel. Police Chief Collins, anything further this evening? Thank you very much. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything else this evening? Appreciate it.
Wow.
Julie is not here from the Recreation Department. Byron, is he still in the room? Or did he leave? Byron from DPW has left the house. Derek has also left the house from Community and Economic Development. Madam Clerk, Sherilyn Tomlin, anything for you?
I'm still here.
You're still here with us. We'd be lost without you.
If you need an absentee voter ballot for the November 8th election, please contact City Clerk's office.
Very good. City Manager, anything additional for us this evening?
I noticed that I'm working with staff to finalize our storm report, just so we have a general understanding of the nature of some of the damage that was done throughout our neighborhoods and overall cost. So, again, we're just kind of, some of that data is still trickling in and hope to have that either this week or next week, so. More to come, that's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney Dan Chris, you've been quiet this evening.
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Councilman Lennon?
You know what? I'll keep it going. I really don't have any. Wow.
Councilwoman Piana?
I have three things. One, I'm channeling Kate. But she, because Kate sits on the Ferndale Board of Directors. I know Anne already came up, but Kate wanted to, someone on council to invite people again October 8th to join the grand opening. Specifically, she says, "The clinic looks awesome," and she can't wait to show it off, so. The second one is a reminder that DTE will be here on Wednesday for a special meeting with council that will be televised, and they're going to go over their report about the outage, power outage in July, non-storm related. So please attend. What time does that start in? Seven? Seven o'clock? So please join us.
So, please join us. And then, the third, which is the fun part, wanted to let you know that I went to the Tiger game last week with Officer Tim Andre, and had a really nice time. And I just wanted to say thank you to him for teaching me about baseball, because I know very little. But also, the whole point was, was to build relationships between council and the police department, and I think we took a good leap forward, so.
Councilman Galloway?
Nothing for me this evening?
All right. And I think most of mine were covered. I would just add that next Monday evening at 7:00 here in council chambers, the League of Women Voters is hosting a debate for candidates in the elections, the November 8th election. And so, come on out to that or watch it on television. It'll also be, we're also broadcasting that, so folks can watch it at home if they like. And that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you. Ah, oh, see, that all the time. I need, that's correct. Counsel is going to consider the motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter, and I would need a motion to do so.
Your Honor, I move to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statutes pursuant to Section 8AH of the OB Meetings Act, MCL 15.268.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Is there discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you very much, and we are in closed session.